Good evening. I'm going to call the August 22nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskuna is on the traditional lands of the Kanikihaka and the Mahikanak peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the July 25th, 2023 regular meeting, regular Town Board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the July 25th, 2023 regular meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August 8th, 2023 special meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the August 8th, 2023 special meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? Are there any changes to those minutes? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are they in the packet?
Yeah, they're in here.
Okay, good. All right. Any opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes have passed. We'll now call for the public hearing. Will the clerk please call for the public hearing? Thank you.
A public hearing on proposed local law D 2023 to amend the vehicle and traffic code of the town in Niskuna to provide for the installation of two stop signs and the removal of a yield sign.
The public hearing is now open. If any residents are here to speak for the public hearing, you may do so now.
I have Bill Chapman that signed up.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is William Chapman, 1465 Clifton Park Road, one of the co-chairs of the Niskuna Complete Streets Committee. And around 2020, the Police and Public Safety Committee for the Town Board asked the Complete Streets Committee to take a look at volume of cars, speed of cars, possible traffic calming steps, and the function of the yield sign at Wyoming and Baker. We'd gotten input by email and input at privilege of the floor at our Complete Streets meetings from folks who lived on Wyoming Avenue and were concerned about traffic volume and wanted us to look at some traffic calming measures. Folks on the committee did take a careful look at the intersection, gone out and walked it, taken some photos, looked at the function of the intersection. We considered email messages that came in from residents on the street submitted to the Complete Streets Committee. We spoke in firsthand with neighbors. We reviewed the data on the traffic volume on the street and the average speed on the street that's been prepared by the Niskuna Police Department and shared with Complete Streets Committee. We heard from Detective Munger, who has joined the Complete Streets Committee. He advised that it makes sense to examine the manual on uniform traffic control devices for criteria that would warrant installation of a stop sign, and we did. And that manual says you should take a look at vehicle and pedestrian volumes, both of those vehicle and pedestrian volumes, traffic speed, visibility, which is sight distance things, trees, shrubbery, hills, curves, and also the accident history. And we are recommending to the Town Board a conversion of the yield sign at Wyoming and Baker to a stop sign, and several reasons for doing that. One, we found that Wyoming Avenue actually has a moderate to substantial amount of traffic on the street that the counter put out by the Police Department from March 8th to April 8th, a one-month period, had 400 eastbound trips a day going on Wyoming Avenue. My assumption is if you've got 487 eastbound, you've got a similar number westbound, and so it's, I think, easy to say that there are now more than 900 trips a day on Wyoming Avenue, which is a lot. That's an increase from the 600 to 700 trips over the period 2014 to 2017. PD had a counter out in 2014 and again in 17. In our view, where you have a street, Wyoming, that's got a moderate amount of traffic coming onto another street, Baker Avenue, that also has a moderate amount of traffic, that the yield sign is just not a strong enough traffic control device to manage smooth flow of traffic there. We also found that there's considerable pedestrian traffic in the area, which is reported by residents on the street. And I myself went out on June 2nd, I sat for an hour in the morning from 7:50 to 8:50 a.m. at Baker and Wyoming. I saw there were 25 pedestrians that passed, five folks on bicycles. I noted at Lexington and Baker, 16 pedestrians, and Baker and Doorwalt Streets, close to Wyoming and Baker, 14 pedestrians. So there are a lot of pedestrians walking on the street. Third, the manual refers to sightline as something that you should take a look at, that when you're eastbound on Wyoming and you come down to Baker Avenue, when you look to the right, there are some trees and some shrubs and other things that impair your sightline. And so that if you have pedestrians on the left side walking on Baker Avenue, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see those people. I think without a full stop, where you come to a full stop, you look both ways, you'd see pedestrians, you'd see other cars. My own, well, it's also the case that Wyoming curves a little bit when you come to Baker Avenue, so it makes it easier for cars to kind of do the slow roll through there. You've got the trees and the shrubbery, so they're going faster than they should be, and they may encounter pedestrians. The residents on the street will tell you that they do believe that folks using the yield now go through too fast. They don't take time to really look, and that's not all of them. I'd say probably 70% of the cars actually do do a proper yield, but the other third are simply going too fast, not taking careful look. Finally, we took a look at the other intersections in the area, and we saw that Doorwalt and Baker has a stop sign as a traffic regulation device, that Regal and Lex, again, a low-volume street, Regal and Lexington has a stop, Kingston and Lexington have a stop. Remisite and Baker has a yield, but it's a very low-volume street, arguably, I mean, could be a stop, but a yield may function there. But Wyoming and Baker, again, is Wyoming's a high-volume street going into another high-volume street, only has the yield sign. And so our examination of what we've heard from residents and looking at it, that the Complete Streets Committee is recommending that the Town Board convert that yield over to a stop, and that you also consider making the intersection a more of a T-intersection, so maybe tightening up a little bit on the right side, so the motors come, stop at a T, look both ways, and then proceed out into the road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The floor is still open for other residents who'd like to speak during, for this public hearing.
Hi, good evening. My name is Frank Champa. I'm a resident here at Niskuna at 1562 Baker Avenue, which is actually at the intersection of Baker Ave. and Wyoming, so right front and center for the intersection act question. Just want to voice support for the proposal before you. I'm here to probably build upon the analysis that you've already heard and just give some personal account of what I've seen firsthand, some of the close calls, encounters between vehicles, pedestrians, bikes. It's a busy area, there's a lot of people out walking, and I know myself, my family, and my neighbors really hope for a safer neighborhood. It's hard with the amount of traffic going through, but this seems like, in my opinion, probably a no-brainer upgrade that will make the area a little bit safer. So wanted to voice my support, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
I have nobody else that's signed up.
Okay, is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on behalf of this public hearing? All right. Seeing no one left to speak at the public hearing, I am now going to close the public hearing, and we will move on to privilege of the floor. There are any residents here who would like to speak for privilege of the floor?
I have Leslie Gold. Leslie Gold, 1919 Potock Avenue. And I just wanted to note Resolution 2023-218 to authorize tuition reimbursement, which I didn't know required Town Board approval, but really kudos to the officer for taking this additional training, and to the chief and department for supporting it, and to the Town Board. I think adding this kind of knowledge to the force is really good.
Thank you.
And thank you to the person who's going to be an alternate at the recycling and transfer station, because we really need an alternate.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak during privilege of the floor? Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Freddett, I live at 1549 Myron Street. My wife and I moved to Niskuna seven years ago. And in that seven years, we have a next-door neighbor who, without exaggeration, has run one construction project after another on their property. It's a huge nuisance. We estimate that 70% to 75% of our weekends have contained at least 20 hours of construction. If you think about that, 48 hours, 20 hours of construction, you sleep eight hours, how many hours of peace and quiet are you supposed to get? Not a lot, a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours at night. I've spoken to the neighbor, he's just been dismissive in the past. He won't change. He does, he does nonpermitted work, I've threatened to go to the town, the building department about it, he won't change. He refuses to stop doing the work. Other neighbors have moved out of the neighborhood because of this person. Last Monday, I was woken up at 4:30 in the morning. They're guarding a kitchen, there's a huge dumpster in her front yard. My family all wakes up at 4:30 in the morning. When I see him outside, I go outside and confront him. I'm pretty angry, I'm explaining to him, I told you, it vibrates in our house, our house is about 10 foot apart from our garage, from his garage to the side of our house, and it wakes everybody up. Doesn't care, gives me one of these. Unconcerned, I'm not doing anything, I haven't done anything. I just, at that point, I'm frustrated, I've spoken to him multiple times over the years, you're going to deal with the police and you're going to deal with the building department, I'm not dealing with you anymore. Anything comes up, calls going in, you know where it came from. As I'm walking away, something really got on my nerves. He said, I know you don't like the construction projects that I'm constantly involved in, but because of the ordinance that was passed, the noise ordinance, I'm allowed to work from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. And it drove me nuts, because he was right. The ordinance is, there's a big loophole in it, he's taking full advantage of it, and there's nothing I can do about it. Fortunately, when I calmed down, I reverted back to my previous life, I worked in corporate communications, mostly on regulatory communications, where I spent a lot of time in conference rooms with lawyers, and no offense to either of you, but it all came back to me that there is a framework, the ordinance exists as a framework. They always said you can put the guardrails in the framework to prevent the loopholes and close them, so that there are no more issues, you can stop the issue, stop the individual from taking advantage of this. I've spoken to people all over this town, some of my neighbors have spoken to people all over this town, they don't know of anybody else who is doing this. You have 99% of the population who, you know, accepts the social contract of living in a neighborhood, one individual who is making things miserable for others. I'm just asking the town, the committee, if there's committees, if you want me to come in, I can explain in more detail, I'm happy to help out, but please, put the guardrails in place, in the ordinance, get rid of the loophole, so that we don't have to live like this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other residents here to speak during privilege of the floor? Mr. Chapman, please keep your remarks within the time limit.
It's a promise, okay.
All right.
First, I'd like to thank the Town Board for going ahead with the expenditure of monies on the Critical Pedestrian Connections project. These are designed to make our walkways safer for everybody, but particularly those that might have a disability of some sort, that work on the design for the crosswalk at St. Joseph's, and also the sidewalk on Plum Street, and actually the Town Board's support for applying for a grant. And I know that we have a crosswalk now on Upper Union that goes over to St. Cattery, and I think these are all important steps to make our town much more walkable, and so I think, like to thank the Town. Secondly, I would like to say, I know that you're working on some steps to do AED device in the town parks, and I'd just like to ask that the Board is, has one here at Town Hall. And, you know, if someone were to have an episode, as I get older myself, it could be me, and so I'd just like to hope that you may have one, so that you don't have to ask a police car to come in, or some other step, that you have one in the building, so you could, you could grab it and use it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We do have one, thank you, in Town Hall. Yes, okay, great, thank you so much. All right. We can now move on to our committee reports. We'll start first with Police and Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Our committee met on August 3rd at 3:30. Under operations, we spoke about Speed Week, which was August 14th through 20th. This was grant-funded in a collaboration with NYSF and some neighboring agencies, and we had a special focus on Route 7. Under training, our department is completing its annual Police One Academy training in procedural justice and implicit bias, this is ongoing training. Officer Mora will be attending a basic school resource officer training, and we want to thank NCAP for funding this training. Sergeant Hardy taught use-of-force training at the Zone 5 Regional Law Enforcement Academy August 3rd and 4th. The department is going to participate in an active shooter training utilizing the Rescue Task Force model, and this is hosted by Glenville. Under citizen correspondence, we have some ongoing issues. One is Marita Aguilar, who requested a stop sign at North Allendale at Becker, and she was also looking for some no dumping signs, and our highway department did put up the no dumping signs, and we're looking to have the public hearing for that. And also, the public hearing was discussed regarding Frank Champa's request to have the stop sign at Wyoming Ave. and Baker. We had Elizabeth Reynolds also requesting Fairfax Ave. be evaluated for unsafe speed, and Officer Munger is deploying a speed trailer for evaluation. Under new correspondence, Michael Klett came to our meeting, and he discussed concerns over ongoing speed and littering on Council Road. Chief Kochen said that he will continue to direct patrols in that area, we're going to continue analysis in that area, and we really appreciated him coming and having a conversation with us. For town events, we have Coffee with the Cop continuing at the Senior Center. On the 14th, we were Starbucks, Sergeant Henry kind of led the way with that, and we also were at the Farmer's Market earlier this month. Under Town Clerk business, we discussed solicitation and peddler's code updates, and looking to do more background checks on solicitors, possibly looking for resident opt-out programs, and the police also, sorry, the chief also suggested exploring aggressive panhandling in our codes. For the school district, the district safety team met with Chief Kochen, continuing to look at Knox boxes, and hopefully getting those ready for the start of the school year. And Bus Patrol is working with the district and our attorney, and looking at language, and working on scheduling a date, it looks like it'll be a 90-day rollout from the time we all agree on the language for the contract. And Chief Kochen attended a SRO workshop, he was invited by the school district to collaborate with this, because parents are asking about SROs in our district. Under, under other, Civilian Police Academy survey is coming out from the county, and so we can look for that on our Facebook page. And the threat assessment through Schenectady County is also going to be coming through, through an executive order by the governor's office, so we'll be sharing information with other agencies, school districts, residents, businesses, to help people find the right resources depending on the concern. And we will be meeting again on September 7th at 3:30.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Moving on to community programs.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Community Programs Committee met earlier this month on August 3rd. Our five-week summer playground camp for elementary school-aged kids has wrapped up for the year. The weather held out this year, as there were no rain cancellations or delays, and we are proud to announce that we surpassed last year's enrollment numbers. Thank you to our seasonal employees, camp supervisors, and staff who worked hard for another successful season, and of course, we look forward to welcoming all of our campers back again next summer. Unfortunately, we haven't been so lucky at the driving range. This has been a very rainy summer, and that has made for a lot of puddling, making the range unusable. However, it is currently open, and weather permitting, will remain so until the end of October. The hours, however, will be changing after Labor Day, so residents are encouraged to check the town's website for the driving range schedule. Movie night on the Town Hall Green is back. Earlier this month, we featured Honey, I Shrunk the Kids and The Parent Trap, and this coming Friday, we hope to have a great turnout for Field of Dreams. Tomorrow night marks the end of our summer concert series. The Mr. E-Band will be performing a mix of popular tunes from the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s in the gazebo at 6:00 p.m. It's been business as usual at the Farmer's Market. The market is held every Saturday here at Town Hall from 8:30 to 12:30, and as a reminder, we do accept SNAP and FMNP benefits. Believe it or not, fall is just around the corner, and that means it's time to start getting ready for our annual Fall Fun Run. This year's run will be on Saturday, October 14th, starting at 5:00 p.m. with a 100-yard dash followed by a 5K, and then a one-mile walk run. All of our normal programs are continuing as usual at the Senior Center. Our 2023 Art Out was a success, and artwork is currently on display at the Senior Center. A reminder that every Monday night, we offer mahjong and open art starting at 4:30. And lastly, save the date for our next practice trip, that will be on October 26th to see Mrs. Doubtfire. Reservations can be made by calling the Senior Center, and as always, residents can check the website for more information on our programs, classes, and entertainment. And our next meeting will be here at Town Hall, upstairs in the Schaefer Room, at 4:30 on September 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. Moving on to Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Public Works met on August 8th. We begin our meetings with transportation and public facilities, and our highway crews discussed hot patching throughout the town. They're working on areas, after we go and pave a certain neighborhood, we have to do repair work and fill the lawns and put seed in, so the highway department does that work after we get done paving the roads, so they've been working on those things. Park crews continue to mow all the parks, working on their schedules to work around weather, and our Parks Department and their program, so it's not like they can just go there the same day every week, they have to sometimes adjust their schedules. Yard waste pickup still going on, if you have any questions about that, please check the website. Fall will be coming soon, so get your stuff out there. We'll have a notice when the loose leaf and brush comes, but we've got a few months for that yet, but just giving you the heads up. Paving in the town, we're working on the second round of paving for the Oakmont and Holiday area. The highway superintendent wants to thank both departments for all their work, there's a lot of prep work that goes into our paving, we have to make sure that all of our valves, all of our drainage, all of the stuff that the town has in right-of-ways is ready to go before we pave the roads. We have to raise our catch basins, sometimes we have to raise our valve shut-off, so there's a lot of work that goes into prepping before we pave, so highway and superintendent want to thank everyone in all departments, as do I, for all their hard work in doing that and getting that ready. Sweeper continues to go through the town. I know that some residents have come and spoke about not wanting to sweep the roads, but this is something that's required and we're going to continue to do, because we have to get any materials that accumulate on the roads, dirt, rubble, pebbles, grass, off the roads, otherwise it ends up in the catch basins, and that's, that's not good, that clogs up the drainage systems. During our open discussion portion of the meeting, we've got some items that we're going to go up for auction. We always recycle or auction off any equipment that we replace, try to get top dollar for it. We also discussed internet connection that we're working on with our IT department at our pavilion over near the rec center, that's for two reasons, one, sort of a benefit to the town residents, but another one also for security reasons for that area, so we're working on trying to get that up. Next portion of our meeting's Public Works, that's our engineering wastewater and water department. During that portion of meeting, we discussed our dish network contract, which is good, and they've come in to get a building permit to put some equipment on water tower here in town. We discussed purchasing some pickup trucks and working on appointing maintenance workers, we're still short people in those departments. Also, in highway, we did hire two people at the special meeting, but we're still looking for employees, so I encourage anybody, if they know someone, please have them, check our website. The town in Niskuna is a good place to work, and it can be a great career. Also, at our meeting, we discussed the utility billings for our water, corporate rates, which are going to be going out, our wastewater treatment plant, our organic waste that we've been taking in down there is going very well, we're working with an engineering firm to help us with the state to open up and expand the list of items that we're able to take, sort of restricted right now, and what they're allowing us, so we want to be able to take some more things, so we're going to be hiring an outside engineer to help us get through that and get the approval from the state. Again, we've got openings in that department. Our water treatment plant, we've done some work down there, we prep our own work, we try to do as much work in-house to save money, so we've done the work for our transformer pad and other work down there. Our electrical equipment that we're going to be replacing down there, we've heard that it should be coming in very shortly, and we're replacing some electrical equipment that is from like the 1960s, so kind of think about that for a minute, you wouldn't want to drive your car, you know, a 1960s car as an everyday daily driver, so although the equipment has done us well, it's definitely time for us to replace some of this equipment, so we're working on that. We continue, as a board in the town, to invest in infrastructure here. That sort of segues into my next announcement, we had a water break on Dean Street impacted about two blocks from Knott Street to Grand Boulevard, we send out notices, we knock on doors, we tell people what's going on to the best of our abilities, we make sure we let the neighbors know, you know, you've got a water break, we're going to have to do some work here. Then, after that, there's regulations that we have to follow, we have to contact Schenectady County, depending on the size and the type of the break. In this particular instance, we did that, they recommended we do a boil water, very short period of time, did a boil water alert, again, notified the neighbors to the best of our abilities about that. It lasted for two days, everything was, was fine, and that break was repaired. And this happens a lot in the town, it's just that particular area, there's a lot of homes in that area, right? It's a small, you know, two blocks, but a lot of people were affected by that. Again, we're working to replace our infrastructure, repair our infrastructure the best that we can, when we need, when we can do that. And the supervisor is working on grant money to try to find, you know, we've got the Infrastructure Act, the national funding, we're hopeful that we, as a town, can get some of those funds to help offset our projects to replace our infrastructure, so we are working on that diligently. So we are working on that diligently. And last in my report, the recycling center, yes, we've got an alternate there employee, so that's good news. We have an e-waste dumpster now at our transfer station, and we're going to be having our Fall Shredding Event, October 21st. We're also going to take electronics at that this time around. So you can take your electronics to the transfer station, but we're also going to be accepting them at our shredding event on October 21st. And that's all I have for now. September 20th, September 7th is our next meeting. Sorry for being so lengthy.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartlin. All right. Wrapping up with our Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation Committee. Take it away!
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, thank you. The first Friday every month, we meet right here in the Schaefer Room upstairs at 8:30 in the morning. I believe it's going to be the first day of September that we meet, and fortunately, we are going to be getting some concrete sidewalks on Plum Street, and that is kind of big because there's, the Hillside Elementary School is there, there's a lot of foot traffic there, something that the town's been working on for quite some time, so that is a big plus. Happy to get that done. The pavilion at River Road Park, the bids came in at a very reasonable cost, so hopefully, this project will start in conjunction with the playground that Ms. Peretti's been working on with the supervisor, and that will get done hopefully within the season or two. So another great thing happening to our parks. We are working on a Quiet Niskuna Initiative, and to go to the point of our neighbor, we can do the best we can with this Quiet Niskuna Initiative, but people do have to be somewhat considerate of their neighbors. We can't really regulate unreasonable and inconsiderate people. We can enforce the regulations like at 4:30 AM, that's really more of an enforcement issue, but we will take those suggestions into consideration. The planning board has been very active. The big news this month is that the Volcano Korean BBQ and Hot Pot opened its doors and has been a big hit. So that, I've heard wonderful things about that, and I want to thank the owner and everybody involved in getting that done. We have the couple of other tenants going into the ShopRite Plaza, and the town's goal is to keep that plaza filled with tenants. So I'm very glad that the supervisor's been working on that, and we're continuing to keep it close to maxed out. Other boards have been very active as well. It is people like the Bill Chapmans who spoke today, the Dart Scrayers, Comprehensive Review Plan work that he does, the Kevin Walshes on the planning board. These are the people that really make their mark on the Town of Niskuna, a lot more so than us sitting up here behind this table. So I again encourage, I really do encourage you folks to really get active in these committees because that makes a big difference. Bill has been active in town, not only politics, but in committee work for probably 25 to 30 years. So he's made a big imprint on this town over that period of time. We still have some other people, some other boards that need to be filled. We have a couple seats left on the Conservation Advisory Committee Board, a couple on the Architectural Review Board, and I believe on the Historic Preservation Committee also. So check our website, and hopefully, we will see you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLorata. Well, we've heard quite a bit this evening. We're voting on several very important resolutions. I'll just briefly provide a few updates. As town supervisor, I have been very focused on supporting and helping our local businesses grow. I'm working with Schenectady County Metroplex. Ray Gillan and David Hogan Camp have been great partners. We'll be adding benches and trash receptacles and bike racks to the Co-op Plaza. The benches and the trash containers will be delivered before the end of this month and installed soon after by our highway department employees. These benches and receptacles and eventually our bike racks are going to add a lot of character to the Co-op Plaza, and I see Knott Street, our Knott Street corridor, as our main street, and we're going to continue to invest in building a place. So the goal is American flags, the goal is additional lighting, the goal is additional benches into our St. John's Plaza. So we're just continuing to invest in our main street. As town supervisor, I also help coordinate our departments to address a variety of resident concerns. And over the past few months, we have seen a significant rainfall occur locally, in fact, hyper-locally, and this rainfall is often very short in duration and also high intensity. So it results in short-term flooding. I have been working with our highway superintendent, Ray Smith, our superintendent of Water and Sewer, Matt Yedo, our town, our senior town planner, Laura Robertson, and our town planner, Clark Henry, to conduct research and identify courses of action. We have also been working with the school district to analyze data and determine possible solutions where there's overlap. So I just want to help, I want to, you know, thank our town employees for, for working so hard to address these issues, meeting with town residents on the weekends, on Saturdays. When there's a call, they go to a residence home and, and they take care of as much as they can right then. And so I just want to thank them for doing that, whether it's looking at the drainage, whether it's dealing with trees that have come down, and they just are there 24/7. So I want to thank them. I want to also share, we've got paving, as Councilmember McPartlin mentioned, on Hummingbird and Oakmont, it is complete. Again, that's a team effort between Water and Sewer and our highway department employees, and they really make it happen in a very short amount of time every summer. They have to contend with rain and, and the weather, and so they get it done. I want to also add to Councilmember DeLorata's report about the pavilion and the play structure. This is all grant-funded work that is through Assemblymember Steck. It's a state grant, and so these infrastructure upgrades to our parks are coming at no cost to our taxpayers, and they're also coming quickly and as a result of hard work of the department heads and our members of the highway department. So again, thank you for that. Finally, I'm very excited about our resolution to hire a new officer this evening. If approved tonight, Cody Hanson will be joining our team. And during the interview, I was very impressed with his strong desire to join our department and also his very strong commitment to treating all individuals fairly and with respect. And that is the type of policing that we want here in Niskuna, and those are the type of characteristics that we want to see in our officers. So I'm very excited to be voting on this resolution tonight. This new hire brings us one step closer to bring, to being a fully-staffed police department, and I am committed to a budget that fully funds 32 officers in our police department so that we can also move towards having a traffic division, and that is to address our community concerns. So again, it's always an honor to work with Chief Koshin and his leadership team to continue and make positive changes in our department and our community. And that is all I have for tonight. So we will move on to resolutions, and we will go a little out of order so that we can vote on Cody Hanson's resolution. So will the clerk please begin with? Oh. I have it right here in my notes. Thank you. Will the clerk please begin, begin with Resolution 2023-214? Thank you.
A resolution hiring a police officer for the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll say it was a pleasure to speak with Cody, and here's excitement to join us, and as Supervisor Puccioni said, and I said to him, we are excited to have you, and thank you for joining our team.
Cody, congratulations. I've heard nothing but extremely positive things from everybody I've spoken to, and it sounds like the town is going to be very lucky to have you, so welcome aboard.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Please come on up so we can swear you in. Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cody Hanson, do solemnly swear.
I, Cody Hanson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. All right, moving on to Resolution 2023-202. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing an amendment to a lease agreement with Dish Network.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-203, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution regarding reconciliation of corporate utility rent for the first quarter of 2023.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-205, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the second quarter corporate utility warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-206, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a participating member agency agreement regarding the Schenectady County Threat Assessment Team.
Okay, so just for the record, that's 2023-25, I think.
205.
205.
205, yes. The number, the numbering is off by one from what Supervisor's saying.
Oh, I apologize.
So Michelle's reading them correctly, but the last one was 2023-204. We're on 2023-205, but everything's been read in correctly, so just to clarify that.
Okay. We're on 205?
Yes, so we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just again, this was an executive order by the governor's office to allow inter-agency information sharing so we can guide to the appropriate resources.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-206, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authoring certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-207, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the annual payment for email cloud storage.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-208, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni and Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing disposition of certain vehicle and certain town-owned equipment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-209, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution accepting a donation for AED program.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This donation is from Jessie and Mindy Holland, and it's an extremely generous donation for our AED purchases. So I just wanted to thank Jessie and Mindy for their generosity here. I think it was soon after we were awarded the grant from the community foundation that Jessie reached out to me and said, this is a great project and we want to help. Jessie and I have been working together in emergency services for as long as I can remember, so he definitely understands the importance of having this equipment readily available in our parks, and I appreciate their generosity.
Excellent. Yes, I would just like to add, Mr. Holland reached out to me this evening and was excited that this was up for resolution, and I'm very thankful to Jessie and Mindy for their generosity and, and for your work on this. Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-210, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a grounds worker in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-211, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a videographer.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLorata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-212, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending Resolution number 2023-178. A resolution amending Resolution number 2023-178.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-214, sponsored by Councilmember, oh, we already did that.
No.
213.
213.
Oh. Okay, I apologize. Resolution number 2023-213, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution hiring a recycling helper.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-215, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending Resolution 2023-133.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So actually, this was a resolution, I put Councilmember's name, Councilmember Moskowitz' name on it, not realizing he was abstaining from voting on it, so if we can have this offered by somebody else, and then a second, please.
I will offer the resolution.
Thank you.
Amending Resolution 2023-133.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Nope, you just, I just need a second.
Okay. Is there a second on this resolution?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
I am going to abstain.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
So four ayes and one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartlin.
Yeah, you're welcome. I read the list, nobody on there I know, personally, no relations.
Resolution number 2023-216, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an individual to the position of water plant operator trainee in the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-217, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution designating a broker of record.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-218, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing college reimbursement cost for a town of Niskuna police officer.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll echo Ms. Gold's comments earlier that the focus of these college courses for Officer Breslin are mental health, substance abuse, and this focus is very pertinent to our community policing initiatives and our dedication to supporting our residents, so we're, we're happy to be supporting this endeavor for him.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, this is a program we've had in the police department for some time, and we continue as a board to support that, and I'm thankful that everyone does that. It is important.
Seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-219, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution, a resolution awarding a contract for technical support related to the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I spoke about this during my committee report. This is to hire some outside engineering to help us expand the program, to be able to take some more waste and help us get through that process with the state, so that's what this is about.
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember McPartlin. You have been integral in getting that wastewater treatment plant up and running, and I also want to thank our Superintendent of Water and Sewer, Matt Yedo, and our Senior Engineer, Dan Bulkey. Thank you so much. That's a big initiative that we've lifted up and we're making excellent progress. Any other discussion? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilman McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-220, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the repair of a gravity belt thickener at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-221, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute an independent contractor and professional service agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So this resolution is to have the ability for our Superintendent of Water and Sewer to bring back a former employee if needed, and we're thankful that Mr. Nagel has offered his services to us in the cases where we might need someone. You have to have certain licensing requirements to be able to do this job, which he has, so we're, we're very fortunate that he's offering his services to us. So if we need that, we can't fill for vacations or sick time or some other reason, we have the ability to, to have somebody else to help us fill that position.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2023-222, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing an individual to the position of equipment operator, plant maintenance mechanic in the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?